Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to get started here just shortly if we can get everybody situated. We're reverting to the old ways. Our technology failed today.
Oh, our technology failed?
Yeah.
Hold on just one second. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, you have not had an opportunity to meet-
I have not.
Adeline Trimble. This is Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Hello, Adeline. Very nice to meet you.
And Adeline is our honorary Commissioner for the day.
I'm so impressed. You are wonderful. I've heard all these great stories about you and it's a pleasure to meet you. I'm honored.
All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Washoe County Commission. We have a few dignitaries in the audience with us today. We have Reno City Mayor, Mayor Hillary Sheeby with us this morning, and also Commissioner Bonnie Weber here with us today. So, thank you very much for being here this morning. I have, but the most important Commissioner I have with us today is our honorary Commissioner, Adeline Trimble, here, and she's going to help myself run the meeting today. So, Commissioner Trimble, will you slam the gavel and bring us into order, please? All right. There you go. Future leader right here. Future leader, everybody. So, we have, we are going to call, we are in order now as the Board of County Commissioners for our regular business meeting of April 18, 2017. And Commissioner Trimble, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
The flag is right behind you.
Can everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, Madam Mayor, just FYI, watch out. Just saying. Just saying. And we've got some skills right here. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Vaughn Hartung.
Here.
Honorary Commissioner, Adeline Trimble.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
I'm here.
Assistant County Manager Christine Voltek. David Wadsville, District Attorney.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, Chief Deputy Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right. Since we, I apologize, today we have this wonderful technology. We do not have our technology in front of us, so we are going to call public comment the old-fashioned way. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments signed in?
Yes, sir. We have Sam Diney, followed by Tammy Holt Still, and then-
Excuse me, chronological order, please.
Mr. Diney. Mr. Diney, please. Mr. Diney, let the clerk call. Clerk, please.
Sam Diney, the DNA of Reno government, and ever since I've come to these meetings, public comment has been in chronological order. The one time it really is important, they disobey their own rules. Why can't you just do it the way it's supposed to be? I asked you politely over there, but you didn't do it. And I don't want to be a curmudgeon, you know, I hate doing that. I'm Sam Diney, the DNA of Reno government. This is my three minutes, and I'm going to, that clock says three minutes. Anyway, this place is a mess. Why do you turn the lights down when the citizens come to the podiums? That's not nice. It's a mess. It's not good. And that young lady there should recognize. Even she's smiling. Why do you turn the lights down? You've got bright lights. We've got dark lights. That's wrong. Bigger fish to fry. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I've been to all these meetings. I know all the rules and regulations. With an honest vote count, I would be there. No, I wouldn't be there. I'd be the governor. No, Sam would be the president by now if we had honest media. But in Reno, you've heard of this fake media? The fake media? There's the Reno mayor right there. Right there. She's heard of fake media. In Reno, we've got Reno Media Mouses, whack-a-doodle, whack-a-doodle news. Whack-a-doodle news from the Reno Gazette, scared to death of those 160-pound senior citizen. And right now, there's open season. Open season on sheriffs in the area. Let's wear that. Open season on sheriffs. The beloved Sheriff Artinuro over there in Virginia City, Story County, attacked by the Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex, taking our tax dollars and attacking, using them to attack Sheriff Artinuro. Thank God she listened to my prayers, and he was not, how do you word it? He passed, he won the recall election. Never should have been an election. He won it hands down. Now, we've got open season on the Washoe County Sheriff, the beloved Chuck Allen, been doing a great job. A great job. The Media Mouse over there who used to watch Sam at the Reno City Council meeting couldn't handle it anymore, so she volunteered to go to jail instead of having to watch Sam. Think of that. So, she goes over there, this Media Mouse probably buttons being pushed by the whack-a-doodle Reno Gazette, and taking this beloved sheriff to task. And jail is not a good place to be. I agree. It's not a good place to be. But you put it this way, thirteen, why are they even, there's so many more important stories than even talking about the jail. The jail is doing good. It's a sad thing that some people have died, no doubt about it. But they ought to be, they ought to be explaining why the media is so scared of this man who has done 92 percent of the good things for Reno. Why? Why are they ignoring Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex that is using our taxes to decimate Reno itself? Schools, law enforcement, buses, everything's out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Tammy Holt Still.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you over there. And, well, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
And I have a handout to distribute from Ms. Holt Still.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Holt Still.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Tammy Still. I applaud your employees for self-improvement. However, you have constituents still in harm's way, either by more water because of saving businesses versus residents, and Silver Lake area, and the residents where homes were red-tagged having to pay for permits, that you, the board, could have waived with a vote. It makes me monder. The last meeting held by Washoe County, which was only Senior Commissioner, the only Senior Commissioner there was Commissioner Herman, that was on March 29th, which at that time Dave Salero stated that it had to be voted on by the Commissioners to waive those fees, and it hasn't been done. Why? The stealing wells. I appreciate that you did not have the state of Nevada purchasing something that did not suit the needs to measure inflows. However, you have not purchased those meters, and it's asking me why. Must be a reason that you don't want to have those numbers. Definitely cannot have a proper, long-term flood mitigation without those sources and flow rates. I know other officials feel the same way. I also want to acknowledge the Commissioners for reversing its support on AB 39. Thank you. I am still requesting, for the fifth time, the expenditures for Washoe County on the emergency. I've done that in writing and verbally. Also, the sewer plant. It's still going into Swan Lake. I've been measuring it. The flow is anywhere from two inches to four inches in height. And when are we going to stop that and move it away from Swan Lake so people are not flooding? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Dori Denson.
Good morning, Ms. Denson.
Good morning. My name's Dori Denson, and I'm a licensed cosmetologist. And recently, I had a citation issued by the board for not having an establishment license and not working in an established salon, which is the same thing, but they wrote me two tickets for it. And one of them's for $1,000, and it is licensed. It's under the people that own it. Okay? I don't own it. I will never be able to have it licensed in my name, ever. It's European Fitness Center. I'm never going to have that place licensed. I can't do that. I tried to explain this to them. I appealed the citation, and there's nobody to answer to. They work for what, the governor. And so, what do I do? Nobody knows what I can do. Do you guys have any idea what I can do? That's my question. Because it's not fair. They want me to pay $1,500 for not having an establishment license for an establishment that I don't own, nor have I ever owned, nor can I ever own it. So, I don't get to answer here, though, right? I'm just going to take that.
No, we can't answer questions.
So, I think it's a bunch of BS. If anybody has any idea what to do, I'd like to know. Because I've talked to attorneys, I've talked to courthouses, I've talked to the board, I've talked to everybody. Everybody says, "Well, just pay the ticket." And I shouldn't have to pay, and I can't work if I don't pay it.
We can get their staff in the back that can discuss that with you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next up.
There is no more public comment.
All right. Seeing no public comment, no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. All right. At this time, Ms. Manager.
Yes, our next item is to welcome new employees to Washoe County.
Actually, we're on to item four. Managers' announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any announcements?
Do you have any announcements, ma'am?
I don't.
All right. Commissioner Herman.
I just was wondering if we could talk about getting the okay on this red tag and permits for people that have the red tags on their property or the yellow tags on their property, as was, I've been asking for for a while. And it would sure help because there are a lot of people out there that like to start working on their homes, can't afford the permit, but they'd like to start tearing out some of the old wet stuff in their house, old wet sheet rock and that sort of thing, and get to work on their houses.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jung, do you need to have anything?
Yeah, I do believe that, it hasn't happened yet, but the District Board of Health is whom we are referring to in terms of the permits, and that is on our agenda. I'm the Chair of the District Board of Health, to waive said permits next Thursday. But they can't be waived until the board that is in charge waives. But it is on there, and I'm certain that it will pass. I mean, clearly, I didn't poll anybody, but I don't think anybody will have an objection for that as well. So, just so we stay in our proper lanes here, and then if someone could help the licensed cosmetologist, because that sounds like another Board of Health issue, and not necessarily us, but, or maybe a city of Reno issue, because really, we wouldn't have business license jurisdiction at European Fitness. So, I think it's a Board of Health issue. So, if staff could work with the woman who-
Denson, is it Ms. Denson?
Ms. Denson, sorry. I didn't write your name down. If you could help her and direct her in the right path to figure out some sort of resolution to the situation she's in right now, I'd appreciate that. And that's all I have, except to just say welcome to our newest Commissioner, and thank you for leading the pledge. It's probably the best pledge leading I've ever heard, and it's just wonderful to have you here. And if you, and I don't even have kids, I don't really even like kids, but you're the type of kid, you are the type of kid that I would happily take into my house. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have anything other than to say the same as Commissioner Jung. A welcome to our new Commissioner, and it's a pleasure to have you here, Adeline, and I am very impressed with everything that you do.
Great. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, too, have nothing. I have plenty of things on the dashboard that staff is working on, and we've got some things happening today. I'm hoping that, hopeful, rather, that the board will support the Yes Grant, the Youth Engaged in Service Grant. Ms. Adeline Trimble is the young lady that was the impetus for the idea of this grant. So, I'm looking forward to an approval for that. And I, too, would like to welcome you, Commissioner Trimble. Thank you so much for coming on today. Our Chairman has a special certificate for you that he will give you at the appropriate time, and then we've also got some other things that are happening. And I'm looking forward to hearing from you about some of the things that you've done, and we'll do that during your proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. And now, I think it is an appropriate time to issue what we have here for today, a certificate that certifies that Adeline Trimble is proclaimed an honorary Commissioner of the Day for this 18th day of April 2017, signed by myself, the Chair, Bob Lucy, of Washoe County Commission, our Manager, John Slaughter, Washoe County Manager, and Commissioner Vaughn Hartung from Commission District Four. So, Commissioner Trimble, here is your certificate. Welcome aboard for the day. We are glad to have you. Do you have a statement you'd like to read for us? It looks like you've got some stuff written down there for us today.
Hi, my name is Adeline Trimble. I am eight years old and in second grade at Spanish Springs Elementary School. In October, I applied for a $500 Disney grant to help my community by collecting books and warm clothing for kids in need. With help of, with the help of my school, we collected over 3,000 books, 900 pieces of clothing, and 100 blankets. We delivered the books and clothes to 16 different places, including the hospitals, kids' cottages, children's cabinets, schools, shelters, the Boys and Girls Club, and many other organizations. I was awarded the Disney grant and used the money to buy more books and clothes.
Well, I think that deserves a, well, a large round of applause. This young lady as a Commissioner in one day has done more than most of these Commissioners have done up here in an entire life, so. And we want to thank your parents. Your parents are sitting right here with us, aren't they? Thank you for all your time and help, and what a wonderful young lady you have. It was unbelievable. I have nothing to share from my comments at this time, other than welcome, Commissioner Trimble. We are honored to have you with us today. And so, at this time, we will move on to Agenda Item Five. Ms. Manager.
Yes. Agenda Item Five is to welcome our new employees to Washoe County. So, the board would please join me down here, and the employees come up to the podium.
Hello, I'm Derek Sonderfan. You may recognize me from a few minutes ago at the first meeting today. I'm the deputy clerk with the Clerk's Office.
Hi, I'm Jean Franklin. I'm a GIS Specialist with the Assessors' Office in the Mapping Division.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Spencer. I'm the therapist for the CPS Crisis Intervention Team.
Good morning, Chris Hansen. I'm a buyer in the Comptroller's Office.
No. Denied, I request. Denied, I request. Denied.
He's a buyer also.
I'm Mike White, storekeeper for Washoe County Health District.
Hi, I'm Theron Clark. I'm a Department System Specialist with the Treasurers' Office.
Good morning. I'm Jeremy Wilson. I'm the Principal Account Clerk for Washoe County Social Services.
Good morning, Elena Bill, Social Services.
We are on, and welcome all the new employees. Welcome to our wonder, wonderful Washoe County family. We appreciate having new employees and new faces here. So, Ms. Manager, we are on to Agenda Item Six, Presentation of Excellence in Public Service Certificates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all of our employees. Administered by the Human Resources Department, Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement, and to Washoe County's journey of excellence. We're pleased to recognize that commitment today. Our first recipient is Kim Imperial. Kim is a Legal Secretary for the Juvenile Services Department and has completed the Essentials of Support Staff Certificate Program. Next, we have Sarah Singleton. Sarah's an Office Assistant, too, for the Clerk's Office, and has also completed the Essentials of Support Staff Certificate Program. Our next recipient is Cindy, or Cinda, excuse me, Hornan, Division Supervisor for the Reno Justice Court. And Cinda has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Rep Certificate Program. And lastly, we have Heidi Howden. She's the Assistant to the Court Administrator for the Reno Justice Court and has completed the Essentials of High-Performing Teams Certificate Program. Congratulations.
With that being said, we are on to our proclamations. And first proclamation we have this morning is 7A, proclamation proclaiming that April 16 through the 22nd as Volunteer Week. And we have Commissioner Jung to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This proclamation for Volunteer Week is coming through our Washoe County Leadership Program, which is a group of volunteer employees that get together to find ways that they can give back to the community. One of the most recent events that they did was the clothing and food drive and pet food drive for Lemon Valley residents affected by the flooding. And it is employee-led engagement program that supports leadership, collaboration, service, communication, and appreciation. There are plans through this program to develop and revamp our recognition of volunteers countywide, and that will happen later in the year. It's imperative and involves departments countywide, which always couldn't make it to this if, remember when we used to do the large groups of volunteers and take the big photograph? Well, there are a lot of county departments that have tremendous volunteers that couldn't make it at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday to be recognized. So, we're coming up, we aren't, the Washoe County Leadership Program is coming up with innovative, all-inclusive ways in which to do a volunteer recognition. The volunteers help us sustain our mission, which is working together regionally to provide and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas, we are fortunate to live in a community where residents, organizations, and businesses are helping to make a difference by enthusiastically engaging in volunteer opportunities offered by Washoe County. And whereas, volunteers bring a wealth of skills, knowledge, and experience that allows Washoe County to continue to provide services such as libraries, senior services, child protective services, law enforcement, parks and trails. And whereas, every hour provided by volunteers helps cut down on the amount of staff time needed to perform essential services, saving taxpayer dollars and increasing services offered by the county. And whereas, in the challenging times, these volunteers play a vital role in helping Washoe County Government provide services that protect the public, provide sustenance to the underprivileged, and preserve our quality of life. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 16 through the 22nd, 2017, as Volunteer Week in Washoe County, a time for us to express our appreciation to the thousands of volunteers who have supported Washoe County, and renew our call for citizens to commit to volunteer efforts that put their expertise and interest to work for the benefit of our community, and signed by our Fair Chairman, Mr. Bob Lucy. And I have to say, before we do the photo op or vote on this, a Commissioner who's in the audience today, Commissioner Weber, was really the one that was responsible for taking the bull by the horns during the tremendous downturn that we experienced in 2007, 2008. And she wouldn't let it go, and staff kept saying, "We can't expand the volunteer program. We're going to need more insurance. It's such a liability. We have to do background checks." And she would not let it go. And staff and the lawyers and the risk managers figured out a way, and we, I can say definitely that we wouldn't have come through the recession as we did. Any more scared, we were less scared during that because we had so many volunteers that stepped up to do some very essential work, filing books at the library. You know, the places that we cut the most, parks and libraries. We have Parks volunteers. We have, I can go on and on. As you know, we have the rescue volunteers for the Sheriff's Office. So, this county, like any other community, cannot operate solely on just tax dollars. It also takes elbow grease and passion and commitment. So, we salute the volunteers, and we look forward to the leadership team's new and innovative program to honor them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Appreciate that. We're going to take these, a few proclamations a little bit out of order, so we're going to go, we are going to move to Item 7C now.
Point of order? Public comment?
We're going to do public comment as a whole for an entire item of seven. When we vote, you would like to vote on 7A?
Correct. The one we just did.
We're going to all do them, Sam, we're going to do them all at once, please. So, we're going to do public comment. We're going to hold public comment for the, all of the items in seven. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, I appreciate your indulgence today. As you know, come over this way, Mr. Trimble. Mom and Dad, Grandma and Grandpa, Kristen? Kristen, would you like to come up, please? It's all good. This is a family affair. We'll give you an opportunity to speak here in just a moment. As all of you know, I have with me today our honorary Commissioner, Adam, Adam, Adeline Trimble. I can do this. See, remember what the mayor told you about being nervous? I'm nervous now. That's how important you are. You made me nervous. The idea of giving back to one's community obviously starts at a very young age, and Adeline is proof of that by virtue of what she's done. And she's not the only one. There are a number of, as you remember, a few weeks ago, we had two young ladies from Roy Gump, the Evans Sisters. Adeline stands in a long line of giving, and this is an important part of the process in our community. You know, Commissioner Jung just talked about volunteers. This is another form of volunteerism in our community that's extremely important. And I just want to, want to go through just quickly, you know, some of the things that she's done, you know, just, just the- she's done, you know, just, just an amazing number of, of items here. She did, with Disney, she did a, a program with them whereby she collected 3,274 books, giving to the Kids Cottage, Sun Valley Elementary, Step Two Family Counseling Center, Libby Booth, the Children's Cabinet, the Women's and Children's Center of the Sierra, Renowned Hospital Pediatrics, St. Mary Hospital Pediatrics, Daughters of DRI, a daughter, rather, of a visiting DRI dignitary from China learning English, the Boys and Girls Club, the Fallon Youth Club, Books of Africa, Sierra Association of Foster Families, Volunteers of America Family Shelter, Washoe County Social Services, Communities in Western Nevada, community, excuse me, Communities in Schools in Western Nevada, for a total of 3,274 books. Just amazing. And then clothing items, warm clothing items, she gave 915 items. She gave to the Kids Cottage, the Children's Cabinet, the Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows, and the Good Shepherd's Clothes Closet. So, this young lady is just a powerhouse. I had the opportunity, the great pleasure, to meet her while I was Principal for a Day at Spanish Springs Elementary School. It was serendipitous. And she so impressed me that her, her mother actually invited me to come to the Children's Cabinet to give some clothing items and some toys and et cetera. And, and it was at that point that I decided that I was going to help Adeline along the way, and I've given her a small grant so that she can, can continue her work. And then later on today, we'll be talking about the Yes Grant Program, which again, this young lady is the impetus for that. She was the, the genesis of that idea of how do we get young people involved in our community? And it's not just involved in terms of giving and doing those kinds of things. It's also involved in coming before bodies like our own and, and being a participant and understanding that, that in order to get things done, she has to work with bodies like the County Commission. Hopefully, she'll be able to go to the Reno City Council, the Spark City Council, and many others, hopefully all the way to the Legislature. And maybe someday, she'll be standing in front of the President of the United States of America. And, and perhaps she will be, Commissioner Jung, President of the United States. I would, I would not disagree with that. So, I'm, I'm very, very pleased today to do the proclamation. Whereas, Disney and ABC, working with Youth Services of America, the YSA, awards $500 Disney of Summer Service Grants for youth-led service projects. And whereas, eight-year-old Adeline Trimble, a second grader at Spanish Springs Elementary School, applied for the grant, submitting a video, drawing, and an online application. And whereas, Adeline won the $500 grant for her project proposal, Kind Kids in Need Donations from Kids. That's an unusual, that doesn't quite work out, but that's okay. To do a book and warm clothing drive for Kids Cottage and tied it into the Spanish Springs Elementary School's Annual Fleece-ing for Friends Project. Whereas, a total of 340 youths were awarded grants in the United States, four were in Nevada, and Adeline was the only youth to receive the grant from Northern Nevada. And whereas, Adeline received so many donations, 3,274 books and 915 items of clothing, that she was able to spread the donations to several other organizations, and some books even went as far away as Africa. And whereas, Adeline designed flyers, counted, sorted, and tracked all of the donations, shopped for additional items, purchased the, then items purchased with the grant money, and helped deliver most of the donations, and is already thinking of new projects to help those in need. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and thanks Adeline Trimble and the students and faculty of Spanish Springs Elementary School for their extraordinary community service dated this 18th day of April 2017, signed by our Chairman, Bob Lucy. And we have with us today a couple of people, Commissioner, that, this is yours, Ms. Trimble. We have Adeline's parents, her grandparents, and then we have someone from the Children's Cabinet. And I'll let them introduce themselves. I will start with, and hopefully we can do this, Ms. Trimble herself.
Would you like to say a couple of words to the Commission?
I am so happy that you guys let me and you guys are like helping me, and I'm thanking you so much for giving, for doing all of this.
Good job. Good job.
No, Commissioner Jung, you may not take her home.[924.82][924.82][laughter] This is not an Adopt a Volunteer Week.[931.01][931.01][laughter] Dana, please introduce yourself. Tell us who you are and...
My name is Dana Trimble, and I'm Adeline's mom. And I just want to thank you for, you know, welcoming her today. We feel really fortunate that Commissioner Hartung got to be Principal for a Day on the day that she had to present to her principal. So, I appreciate everybody's support, and she didn't know when she was going to do that, who was going to be there. So, it was an amazing opportunity, and it's been fun to watch this progress. She had come and came to me and said, "They keep advertising this on the Disney Channel, this, can we apply? Can we apply?" And I finally said, "Okay, okay, okay. Let me look into it." And so, and here we are today. So, it's come a long way. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Trimble, thank you for coming. Mr. Trimble, Mr. Trimble is a teacher at Spanish Springs High School.
Again, my name's Robin Trimble. I'm Adeline's father, and thank you again for this opportunity. Adeline is just, she's the one that started this. She's the one that's been showing such a good example for all of, all of us, and we're just extremely proud of her. So, thank you very much.
And then we have her grandparents. I won't force you to say anything. It's okay. But we do have, Kristen, would you like to say a couple of words? Because I know you guys are going to be the recipients for the next portion of this from, from Adeline.
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name's Kristen Lobicki. I'm the Fund Development Director with the Children's Cabinet, and it's an honor here to recognize Adeline and what she's done to help the Children's Cabinet and other organizations, children and families in Washoe County. The Children's Cabinet's mission is to keep children safe and families together. And as many of you know, I think we're an example of a really healthy and thriving public-private partnership that serves the state of Nevada and especially Northern Nevada. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come here to also acknowledge our longtime partnership with Washoe County and to acknowledge John Slaughter and others who sit on the Children's Cabinet Board. So, thank you again, Adeline and family.
So, thank you, Commission, and I will make the motion to accept this and...
Wait, we're going to do, we're going to do all the motions, all, all at the end.
Very good. Okay.
So, Ms. Trimble, thank you very much for, for, and the Trimble family, thank you for being with us today. We really, truly appreciate it.
And then are we going to do pictures afterwards?
Yes, we are.
All one group?
Yes, we are.
If you all stay, we're going to, we're going to do a group photo when it's all...
So, I would, I would ask Commissioner Trimble if you'll come back up and join me.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Hartung. We are on to...
Who do we have from Emergency Response? Do we have anybody here?
We do. We have deputies, I believe, for public safety, yes. Deputy Peterson.
Mr. Harmon.
Members of the SO Office.
Mr. Green.
Pretty cool. Good job.
Okay. Russ, are you, are you undercover? Are you undercover today?[1125.54][1125.54][laughter]
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
I have with me, what is your official title now?
Chief Deputy.
Chief Deputy, Chief Deputy Tom Green. Tom and I have known each other for actually many years. And then, which, are you Lieutenant?
Captain.
Captain. I don't, I...
Constable.
Chief Deputy Green. And we won't hold it against you that you've known him for that long either.
I refer to, to Mr. O'Connor here as Constable. When we write back and forth, I, I always write Constable. I think it's appropriate. So, what we have today is Emergency Response, and, and, you know, our community could not thrive without the emergency response that we have from all of the agencies. And it doesn't matter whether you're talking about the SO or whether you're talking about Truckee Meadows Fire Protection, but you're also talking about, of course, Reno and Sparks PD, Reno and Sparks Fire, the Red Cross, all of the agencies that are involved in emergency response. And it helps make our community a safe, healthy, whole place. So, whereas, behind every emergency response that takes place in Washoe County, there is a team of dedicated, professional communication specialists who are often the first and most vital link between our citizens and emergency services. And whereas, Washoe County Communication Specialists are the lifeblood of information for more than 500 public safety personnel 24 hours a day, seven days a week, providing a critical safety service to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, Reno Sparks Indian Colony Police Department, the Pyramid Lake Tribal Police, the United States Department of Veteran Affairs Police, the Washoe County Department of Alternative Sentencing, and after-hour servicing for the Washoe County School District Police Department. And whereas, the 23 communication specialists and four supervisors who serve at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during more than 1, 775,000 calls, wow, that's a number, that's a, that's a big number, sorry, of calls for service each year, covering an area approximately 6,700 square miles with over 110,000 residents. Every, and whereas, every Washoe County Communication Specialist is certified by the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch and Emergency Medical Dispatch, Emergency Police Dispatch, and Emergency Fire Dispatch, so that they may provide a substantial contribution to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of medical patients throughout Washoe County. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 16th through the 22nd, 2017, as Public Telecommunications Week. In Washoe County, in Washoe County, in honor of our county's less visible but vitally important first responders, the dedicated and professional communication specialists who are always ready to serve the interests of the public safety, no matter how difficult or stressful circumstances. Dated this 18th day of April 2017, signed by our Chairman, Robert Lucy. And gentlemen, there is your proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Chief, you want to say a couple of words?
Thank you, Tom Green, Chief Deputy. I just appreciate the, the County Commission recognizing our dispatchers and our call-takers. It is a tough job. Every single call that they get, they don't get to deal with the finality that the officers or deputies get to deal with on the street. So, we just do appreciate you recognizing their service, and we sure appreciate their service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Green.
Thanks, sir.
Captain, would you like to say anything?
Tim O'Connor, Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I'll just echo Chief Green's thanks from the Board for recognizing all that our dispatchers do for us every day. It is, as you mentioned, a difficult job. They don't get the opportunity to visualize what's happening. It's sort of a one-sensory deprived job, and that really makes it hard for them. But they work so hard for us to ensure that we have the information we need and we're as safe as possible when we respond. So, our thanks to you for recognizing their hard efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here today. Please stick around, and we'll grab pictures with you in just a minute. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Burke Bigler. Next, we're going to go, we're move to 7E, Proclamation for National Prayer Day, National Day of Prayer, I'm sorry. And we have Commissioner Bonnie Weber with us to help Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And welcome, Commissioner Weber. It's so great to see you. This pro, this program, National Day of Prayer, has been highly advanced here at the county by our former Commissioner, Bonnie Weber. She was really the proponent who worked on it a great deal of time. And so, she's asked me occasionally to come and work on this, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas Washoe County will, whereas Washoe County will join with the state of Nevada and recognize May 4th, 2017, as the 66th Annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas, in 1775, the First Continental Congress called the colonists together to pray for wisdom in shaping our nation. And as America grew, national prayer continued, prompting a proclamation from President Abraham Lincoln in 1863, and a Congressional Joint Resolution signed by President Truman in 1952 establishing a National Day of Prayer. And whereas, the theme for the 2017th National Day of Prayer is, "For your great names, for your great," excuse me, I'm losing my voice here, "For your great name's sake, hear us, forgive us, heal us." And whereas, we pause to remember the brave men and women serving in our armed forces, and we pray for their protection and ask God to grant them strength and courage to confront the extraordinary hardships they face. And whereas, we give thanks to the gift of freedom and express our overwhelming gratitude for those who defend it. And whereas, on May 4th, Washoe County residents from diverse socio-economic, political, and ethnic backgrounds will unite to give thanks for many blessings and to ask God to strengthen our families and schools and our government. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby, hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017, as National Prayer Day, dated the 18th day of April and signed by our Chairman, Bob Lucy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.[1564.91][1564.91][applause] Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing me to be here, and just really appreciate your support of the National Day of Prayer. It's been many years that we've had a proclamation. Actually, it's 13 years that we've had this proclamation here at Washoe County, and I thank you for that. This is, this is a national event. The President signs the proclamation every year. Our governor in Nevada also signs a proclamation, so we just really appreciate that. Today, Dan Simpa, Pastor Dan Simpa, was supposed to be here, and I just wanted to tell you, he apologized greatly. He thought the meeting was on Thursday for this proclamation. You know, Thursdays, it's the first Thursday in May is when our event takes place every year. And he thought it was supposed to be on Thursday that he would come and get the proclamation from, from you all. So, just appreciate. He is now down in the south part of Washoe Valley, full of paint. When I texted him and said, "Where are you?" And he apologized that he thought it was Thursday. So, this year, on May 4th, the event is here in the courtyard. We have an event, and this will be our 12th year of having an event. Commissioner Hartung has been there, I think, every year that he's been on the Commission. Just appreciate that and been very supportive these last years. Commissioner Burke Bigler. Commissioner Jung, you've been there as well. It's an hour-long event. We ask your employees, staff, everyone who would like to attend. It is May 4th, out in the courtyard. You have to dress, whether it's raining, bring your umbrella. It can be really hot out there. We hope that you'll come. It's just an hour long, and we let balloons go, and it's just a great event. And we pray for all of our, our men and women in the military. We pray for media, our government officials. We just, it's just a great time. So, for all of you, many of the faiths are represented. We just ask you to come out and, and join us. And with that, thank you very much, and just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber.
Thank you very much. Stick around so we can take a photo.
Okay.
We always have to have that opportunity to take a photo.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Miss, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Ms. Manager, we have a, I know you had a brief statement. We're going to do the Proclamation for National County Government Month. So, I'll, at this time, you know, I was a, as your Chair of the Washoe County Commission and also as a member of the Executive Board for the Nevada Association of Counties, this is a unique pleasure for me to read this proclamation today for National County Government Month. It just goes to show you how important our government is at the local level and that how many things get, get taken care of by our city and county governments. You know, everybody discusses how important state and federal governments are, but really, what happens on a day-to-day basis happens through your city and county governments. So, I have with me today Assistant County Manager Christine Volitich. So I have with me today Assistant County Manager Christine Volitich, and she's going to read a little statement for County Government Month. So.
Thank you, Chair Lucy. I just wanted to make everyone aware that in honor of National County Government Month, the Communications Division of the Office of the County Manager has been implementing a social media campaign designed to bring greater awareness of all the programs and services that the county offers to our community. We've incorporated the national hashtag for National County Governance Month, hashtag NCGM, for nationwide visibility, as well as our own Washoe County hashtag, hashtag Washoe Impacts. And here's the impact of our campaign. Basically, the goal is to get one tweet per day for the month of April, 30 tweets total, and so far, we have six departments that are featured to date, including our Social Services Department, our Parks and Recreation, Public Defender's Office, Community Services, Animal Services, and the Crossroads Program. So we encourage everybody to participate. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So at this time, I'll read the proclamation, and so, here we, here we go. Whereas, the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create health, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas, counties move America forward, providing healthcare, administering justice, keeping communities safe, creating economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas, Washoe County takes pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health and welfare and safety of our residents in an efficient, cost-effective ways, and strives to maintain and protect our rural lands and natural resources. And whereas, through the National Association of Counties, NACO, President Brian Dislodge's Brilliant Ideas at Work Initiative, NACO is encouraging counties to focus on the most innovative programs and services that strengthens communities. And whereas, in order to remain healthy, vibrant, safe, and economically competitive, Washoe County provides public health, justice, emergency management, economic services that play a key role in everything from residents' daily health to disaster response. And whereas, Washoe County has dedicated sta, has a dedicated staff that takes pride in providing the services that citizens rely on every day. Now therefore, Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim, April 2017, April 2017, as National County Government Month, dated this 18th day of April, 2017, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair of Washoe County Commission. So, with that, Ms. Volitich? This is to, and you know, this is a proclamation for all of our employees here at Washoe County, and not just Washoe County, but within the entire state. I can't tell you what, what amount of work it takes with our partners, our neighbor neighbors in Story County, in Lyon County, also, you know, Pershing, Humboldt, everybody. We, we operate in Clark County, our sister, sister county down south. It takes, it takes all of us to really make sure that the State of Nevada is protected going forward, so we honor them here this month. And next, I would like to read a proclamation for a different type of prevention, a different type of acknowledgement for this month. This is one that I had requested previously, and it's, it's very important, this is, we, every day, you know, and I think this is suiting following our National City Government Month, our National County Government, I mean, National County Government, thank you. We discuss our human services and our social services, the, the time and effort that they put in every, every day to protecting our most vulnerable citizens within our community. And, and those are our children, the children that, day in and day out, have very little voice to no voice sometimes, and it's, it takes a tremendous amount of support and dedication by the individuals in our Health and Human Services Department to make sure that these children are protected. Also, not just them, but our DAs, our justice, our justice system, our Sheriff's Office, our firefighters, every part of our, our county government has a role to play in the protection of, of these, our children in our community. And so, it gives me great honor to read this proclamation today. I have with us our Social Services Director, Amber Howell, so she's here to accept the proclamation. So, whereas, our children represent innocence, happiness, and our future, and the Washoe County Department, and the Washoe County Department of Social Services remains devoted to the safety and well-being of our children, families, and community. And whereas, in fiscal year 2016, 7,437 reports were made to Washoe County Child Protective Services. I'll read that again. 7,437 reports were made to Washoe County for Child Protective Services. And whereas, child abuse prevention succeeds because of meaningful connections, partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas, employees placed 700 blue pinwheel inside, blue pinwheels, inside and outside several Washoe County buildings to raise awareness for National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. And whereas, the pinwheels represent the joyful, carefree childhood that every child deserves, and are assembled to aspire for a brighter tomorrow and a future that recognizes the importance of having happiness, successful, thriving children. And whereas, the public is encouraged to join in the national effort by wearing blue clothing or ribbon during the month of April, and be attentive and cognizant in their efforts to stop child abuse and neglect by reporting suspected abuse or neglect. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim, April 2017, as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month, to raise awareness about child abuse prevention, assist families in the needs and guidance, support, and recovery, and as a reminder of those thousands nationwide who are victims of abuse daily. Dated this 18th day, April 27th, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair of Washoe County Commission. Ms. Amber Howell.
My name is Amber Howell. I serve as the Director of Washoe County Department of Social Services. This is a tremendous event that we're facing today. We have 953 children in foster care in Washoe County. It does take a community and a village to keep children safe. I am happy to report, in the last year, we have prevented 200 less removals than years past. We are finding amazing and creative resources and funding to provide the necessary services so children and families can stay together strong and healthy. So thank you so much for recognizing the importance of this and for going along this journey with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so everybody, all the Commissioners were given a blue pinwheel lapel pin. I see a couple of our Commissioners have got those on already, so we just want to make sure that for the rest of the month, I'm going to challenge all the Commissioners to continue to wear this, our blue pinwheel, and make sure that you continue to support Child Abuse and Prevention Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So shall we do?
Let's do pictures.
You want to do pictures first, or you want to allow public comment first?
Let's do pictures first.
All right.
We'll do public comments. All right, so if we could get everybody down here, so we'll start with Mrs. Trimble's family, how about that? Let's do that.
Do that.
Miss, yes, thank you. Everybody, here we go, in three, two, one more, here we go, three, two. Great. Thank you.
Can we get Chief Green, Mr. Captain?
I noticed you guys at the same height.
I know. She's even my daughter, I told you.
You guys could use the same box. Stand up.
All right. Commissioner Allen, you gotta let three know now. Here we go. Three, two, one more, three, two. Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Commissioner Weber?
Thanks for meeting, guys.
Put that thing away.
She's texting.
No, I'm texting it.
Oh, you are?
Get in here.
Yes.
All right, here we go. And then, three, two, one more, three, two.
Thanks, Commissioner Weber.
Commissioner Weber?
Thanks.
Here we go, three, two, one more, three, two. All right. All right. So at this time, we'll call for public comment on, on item 7A.
Mr. Chair, we have Sam DaNae.
Thank you. Mr. DaNae.
Sam DaNae, the DNA of Reno government, and for the folks out in TV land, they don't know what's happening, they don't know that citizens had to sit through about 30 minutes of extraneous stuff that they might not have been interested in. Myself, I came down here, all the way, took my time off from valuable things I could be doing to come down here for one proclamation, and their very own, by the way, I put you on notice, I am filing an open meeting law complaint against the Attorney General for your wasting of citizens' times. I won't say this was a waste, young lady did a wonderful thing, but the point is, I wanted to speak on an agenda item, and your, your laws and bylaws state plainly that a citizen can speak on numbered agenda items. I put that, turned that in, and instead, I had to sit through 30 minutes of things that were very exciting, don't get me wrong, but it was wrong for you to have this guideline in this rule. It fits in, it's all, it's not as bad, no, it's worse than turning the lights off on the citizens back there who might be maybe taking notes, and they can't see to take notes because it's dark back, back there. Anyway, I came here to speak on one proclamation, and that happened to be the, that happened to be, I'm trying to, the, the kind officer over there came over there and said maybe I was being a little verbose or whatever, I was, I was not disturbing the meeting, but anyway, I am upset at this rule that you made me sit through there for 30 minutes, and it's wrong pragmatically, and, and it's inconsiderate of the citizens who might come down here for an agenda item. I came down here to speak on the fact that you were making this Volunteers of the Community Award proclamation, and ladies and gentlemen out there in TV land and in the audience there, America has no greater patriot, warrior, entertainer, or volunteer than Sam DaNae. To put it in perspective, I have been, I have been at 4,725 public comments, doing more for the community than all the citizens added together for 25 years, and I've never asked for, nice smiley face, I've never asked for anything, and I've never gotten anything, and I don't want anything. I just want to come down here and do my thing. Nobody, I, I'm responsible, like I said, for more good things, and now I'm responsible for protecting the sheriffs from, from open season against sheriffs by the Reno Gazette, the wackadoodle newspaper, and all sorts of other things. The nice thing about this, I guess, is that this young lady not only got to do all of her wonderful things, she got to see the greatest orator, warrior watchdog in history in action. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you over there.
Thank you. Any further comment?
There is no more public comment.
Thank you. All right, looking for a motion to accept proclamations.
Approval of the proclamations on number seven.
I have a motion, I have a motion from Commissioner Burke Bigler, secondly from Commissioner Hartung. No, she can't, she's not, legally, legally. So I have a motion by, I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Hartung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Commissioner Jung, we are on to donations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to draw the public's attention to items 8A through E. 8A is $68,111.20 from the Vera Silverstein Gift Trust for Improvements to Bowers Mansion. Item 8B is, hang on a second, Commissioner Weber, is, 8B is cash donations totaling $387,720.64 from the Wilbur May Foundation. Also, cash donations in the amount of $48,293.08 for the regional parks and open space programs and facilities. Also, a cash donation of $19,530 from Lifestyle Homes Foundation, the Lissner family, and this will support the purchase of a 2014 E350 van for use by the Washoe County Senior Services, and this is one of Commissioner Weber's projects of the seniors helping seniors. So, and she cultivated that relationship with the Lissners, helped them create the foundation, and they have done tremendous things for the North Valley, so I didn't want you to leave until I could at least honor you for that too, my friend, because you're very well missed, I'm going to tell you that. Item number 8E is finally, another cash donation for senior services in the amount of $15,804.47. We appreciate each and every one of the citizens out there that consider us a great investment for their philanthropic needs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I will accept, look for a motion this time to accept donations. I have a motion with Commissioner Jung.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by, yes.
We have public comment.
Thank you, sorry, thank you for pulling me over.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
All right.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I am talking on 8D, and it's Lifestyle Homes Foundation for the purchase of one, 2014. Well, I do know that the seniors don't have very much money to live off of since they are retired, most of them, and I just wanted to tell you too, what their lifestyle is none of anybody else's business, because what they buy and purchase is for themselves, and if they need or want anything, they have the right to put it on layaway, of course, and purchase it. But you people are not allowing this to happen. They're all saying that they're too poor, they can't afford it. And I just wanted to let you know, it says here, Washoe County Senior Services, they do a lot. They have lunch served over at the senior center, and you have to pay for your meals. They are not free. This is the only way that they could purchase the food again and serve it out again. But I just wanted to tell you, they also have a nice thrift store, but don't go in with. But you people are not allowing this to happen. They're all saying that they're too poor. They can't afford it. And I just wanted to let you know, it says here, Washoe County Senior Services. They do a lot. They have lunch served over at the senior center, and you have to pay for your meals. They are not free. This is the only way that they could purchase the food again and serve it out again. But I just wanted to tell you, they also have a nice thrift store. But don't go in with your machine guns because you can't afford to pay it. And I just wanted to tell you too, right now where I live, I just moved in, and they are already needing help at the senior center over there. They live there. Some of them have been there for about 20 years. And a lot of them are needing help because somebody had to go in with their machine gun and shoot them down. Because they are living too high. You know, even though they own their homes, they are old now, and they still need supervision too. One lady, she's my next door neighbor, and she is a senior, and she invited her grandchildren over for a meal because she wanted them to live on the property too. And she wanted to watch them a little more closely because you never know what may happen. But this senior, she had her grandson move in just right across the way so she could watch him, and he was filled with bullet holes.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. All right.
There's no more public comment.
No more public comment. So, I have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Ms. Manager, we're on to Item 9.
Item 9. Item 9 is an appearance by Brad Segal, President of the Progressive Urban Management Associates. His presentation, he's gonna give a presentation and an update regarding the City of Reno Downtown Action Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Manager.
All right, thank you very much. Hillary Sheevey for the record. First of all, I want to say thank you to my fellow colleagues and county commissioners. I'm excited to be here today with the City of Reno. I think you're going to enjoy the presentation that we have for you. But first of all, I really want to thank you for your continued support. Every single one of you have been at the meetings to tackle our downtown, look at the serious challenges we have, certainly with mental illness and the homeless population. So, I want you to know, I'm so grateful. And Adeline, are you loving this new gig or what? You're pretty good at it. These guys all need to watch out. Right? Anyway, thank you so much, and I'm gonna let them take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Sheevey.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Brad Segal. I'm with a firm called Progressive Urban Management Associates. We're from Denver, and we've been working in Reno over the past year on an action plan for the downtown. Commissioner Trimble, this presentation is very much for you because in another five, 10, 15 years, when you're a teenager, a young adult, we're really working toward a downtown Reno that's gonna be a fun place to go. Fun place to live, work, and play. So, on the right-hand screen, my right, your left, I'm just gonna give you some of the, and Igo, I guess you have a screen right up there. I'm gonna give you some of the highlights from the downtown plan. As I mentioned, we've been working for more than a year. We are real estate economists and planners, so we've been looking at downtown through that lens on how really from a market standpoint downtown can best evolve here over the next five to 10 years. The downtown study area includes the river, goes north to I-80, adjacent to, of course, the University of Nevada, Reno to the north. Over the past year, we've heard from a lot of Reno residents, more than 1,400, 1,400 inputs into this plan. So, individuals in the community through a variety of forums. We've had design charrettes, we've had open houses, we've had one-on-one meetings, an online survey where more than 1,000 Reno residents registered what they'd like downtown to be. And these five words on the slide really sum it up. These are the core values for this plan and what we're trying to achieve. So, a downtown that's prosperous, that's connected to a whole variety of attractions so you can get around on a bike and also walk in addition to a car. Livable, a place that you can live, and certainly, the younger generations, those younger than 35 now, wanna be in downtown. So, it actually has huge economic development impacts for the whole county, that downtown prosper as well as the rest of the county. Fundamental to all this is a downtown that's safe and clean, and we've got some pretty key recommendations on helping to make that happen. And ultimately vibrant, a place that's fun, active, and you always know there's gonna be something going on. This slide shows a variety of different things that we've looked at, it's just to give you a sense of the scope of the plan. So, we've looked at how do we get around on a bike, how do we walk, different development sites, infill, which is where new projects, new development could happen over the next five to 10 years. We've divided downtown into different districts, and there are strategies related to these different districts. So, in the north, the university district, making sure we really take this opportunity to connect downtown to UNR and do it in a variety of ways, not just physical connections, but also through programming and different events that are relevant to both the students and the faculty there. And innovation in an industrial district on the northeast side of downtown. Right now, it's fairly underutilized industrial, but these types of districts are really popping in cities all over the country, and we see a lot of potential there for entrepreneurship and for people to make stuff, to actually make things and light manufacturing, that type of thing. And also connections, once again, with the university. The river, really Reno, the county have done great things with the Truckee River. We work all over the country. We've worked in 35 states, 200 cities, and rarely have we seen a river renovation as extraordinary as the one that you have in downtown Reno. So, how do we take advantage of that asset that we've invested in, and how do we make that a better place, particularly for people to live near? And then entertainment, not only supporting gaming, which is a mainstay of downtown, but how do we diversify entertainment into a variety of other areas where trends show that there's support in the next five to 10 years? The plan itself has a fairly detailed action plan. There are more than 50 different recommendations. They're sequenced versus long-term to quick wins or short-term type of activities. We've divided the action plan into three areas. Economy are different activities that are intended to create jobs and attract investment. Environment is how do we make downtown more physically attractive. And then experience is that experience of walking throughout downtown. So, a variety of recommendations ranging from housing to jobs, taking advantage of the river, connections, making it more safe, clean, a variety of things. You know, it's on the bottom of that chart, a downtown management organization, and this really gets to the central recommendation for implementation of the plan. And this is something we're gonna be talking about with the mayor and the Reno City Council tomorrow, at a special meeting tomorrow, is really moving forward with implementation. And the central recommendation on implementation is the creation of a new private-public partnership in downtown Reno, a new management organization. And this is modeled after a similar structure that we've seen in other cities across the country. So, the intention of this is, one, is to really provide a new partnership that'll stabilize the downtown streets, really make them reliably safe, welcoming and inviting, create a new public-private partnership so that we can leverage scarce resources, not only from the public sector, but also importantly, from the private sector. And I should mention, we've had a great response from a variety of different business interests in Reno for this approach. A unified voice for downtown and a champion, if you will, long-term champion, and really bringing best practices to Reno. We have provided examples to Reno city leadership, and in fact, on two occasions now, city leaders have visited Sacramento to see this type of management organization in place. Other cities in the region that also have this approach include Boise, Spokane, and Salt Lake. So, my last couple slides, we'll just talk a little bit more about this management organization that we hope to be developing with city leadership in Reno over the next several months. It'll be a nonprofit, and we're really hoping to make this happen through re-engineering existing assessment districts. Right now, in downtown Reno, property owners pay special assessments for supplemental services. This proposal will essentially re-engineer those districts and create a new governance structure for them. So, I think the good news today for the county commission is this is information. We're not looking for money from the county to engineer this plan in downtown Reno, but we are looking at some creative ways of working with the city to make that happen. And then lastly, in terms of what this entity will do, we're hoping to augment downtown Reno policing efforts with a whole new team of uniformed ambassadors and caseworkers that can thoughtfully and compassionately work with folks on the street who may need help. We're proposing to continue enhanced city policing services and maintenance services, and then also a new entity, a new organization that can champion and market downtown Reno over the long term. So, the next series of slides, just in the interest of time, I'm just gonna zip through. They really get into the weeds, into the details, and this is something we're gonna be taking up again with the mayor and the city council tonight. But it gets into the financing and how we're proposing to re-engineer the existing assessment districts into the new one. On the left is the, on the left of the slide is the existing districts. On the right is the reconfiguration of these districts. We have some recommendations for the city on how they can create some additional funding to direct it to downtown improvements. And then lastly, we're providing a short-term action plan. And again, these slides, again, directed to the city, and in the interest of your time today, I think I'll just wind you through the last slide. And I don't know if we've got time for questions today, but...
We sure do.
Certainly, certainly happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, sir, for being here. Mr. Segal and Mr. Thomas and Madam Mayor. I applaud the City of Reno for doing this, and I think it is, we are at the ripe moment in which we can all partner to make sure that the downtown is thriving and healthy and attractive. We generate a lot of property tax revenue down there that we get. I don't know if the county people know that, but it doesn't matter, we're, building is, we get our cut too, when it comes to property taxes. And I do want to give you an update. I'm on the Oversight Committee for our Community Assessment Center and, or Committee, I'm sorry, the community, yeah, it's Committee Assis, Community Outreach Center? Yes, sorry, it's our homeless shelter. And I did direct staff at that meeting to look at ways to expand what that Oversight Committee does that could help with this. Mr. Thomas met with me, I don't know if he met with the rest of you, to go over what this proposal is. And I certainly believe, and I want to make the commitment, and I know we'd have to do this more formally, but when it comes to caseworkers downtown, that's our bailiwick. That's what we do. The City of Reno and the City of Sparks really aren't in the business of social services. So, we certainly can support that or offset some of the money that will be required to do this project, but I think it's a great project. I completely endorse it. However I can help, let me know. I'm happy to talk to donors, and Hillary, you know I'm one of the best fundraisers on the planet when it comes to doing phone calls. Thank you. I would love to be involved with this, and I think it's a great moving forward with the county and the cities. And I would also really encourage the City of Sparks to, while they might not be able to afford this big of a reach, to steal from what we're doing and implement their own. I'm happy to help them as well because both of those cores make, sure make a difference of the quality of life here and is where we generate most of our dollars. So, I'm happy to be, do anything I can to help you move this forward, Mr. Segal and Mr. Thomas. And good job, Mr. Thomas. I know you've been banging your head on this issue for, what, four years now, and I think this was a great recommendation that you made. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Burkler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to second everything Commissioner Jung said. This is such a great idea. You know, we, we say frequently in the county that we are the county of all the residents, the residents who live in the cities as well as residents who live in the unincorporated portion of the county, and this is exactly what we need to partner with you guys to do, to do whatever we can to make our downtown pretty. And I really like your plan. I fortunately did have not had the time to really go through it all because we were on a short timeframe today, but thank you for putting it forward, and I'm sure we can pick up the details from the mayor or from Bill. So, thank you very, very much for being here today. And thank you, Ms., Madam Mayor, for taking the time. I know your schedule's very busy, and thank you.
Thank you. You guys have been at the table all the way through, and that's huge, and it's important. So, I just want to thank you for your gratitude, because you guys will be a huge catalyst in this, and we couldn't do it without you.
Thank you very much for taking all the time today to listen to all the things we had to do and not getting upset with us as we were doing them.
We're just gonna make you come to council meetings.
Please don't.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will, I will yield to Commissioner Jung because I think she wants to add something, and then I will be happy to add in afterward.
I forgot to, again, make my impassioned plea to my Board of Commissioners. This is also a great opportunity for us to pass that government services tax raise about 16 million a year if we did that, and that's at your DMV, it'd be about $28 more if you had a brand-new vehicle, that would be added on to your registration. But that money could be used to help things like this. Not all of it, because we have senior issues, we have parks, we have library, we have a lot of other stuff. And if you saw in our citizen survey, one thing that they were really about was public safety, and that part of public safety is a thriving downtown that you feel comfortable to, I mean, I feel comfortable to go downtown. I'm not, I'm not gonna keep up that myth that people say they're afraid to go downtown, but some people are. And we do have some mental illness that every city has downtown. So, if we could just get that passed, you guys, we could, I mean, I even have proposed to staff, like, let us take over the whole homeless bailiwick, take it away from you. If you help us pass it, we'll have the money to do it, and we should really be the person in charge of your homeless shelter too. And another point to make that is sort of an update for you as well, is we're looking at taking that downtown homeless shelter and turning it into administration and family. That way, we can do satellite homeless shelters all around the valley, and they're not consolidated right in your downtown. I know that's a detractor for economic development. So, government service tax plea, again, you can see, I'm gonna bring it up every time I can until I get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to thank everyone, Madam Mayor, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Segal, thank you so much for coming out today. I agree with all the things that my fellow members have said about revitalizing the downtown core. It's such an economic driver, and it's such a draw to have a clean, well-thought-out core. And it really can be a place that draws people 365 days a year. You go to many places in California, our daughter was in Palo Alto, and you go to downtown Palo Alto, and it's just, it's just so amazing to be there, all the restaurants and the shops and all of the things that are happening, and it really, it feeds on itself. And I think that's what you're, what you're trying to do here is, is, you know, once you, once you get the ball rolling, I believe that it will be somewhat of a perpetual motion machine where it will feed on itself. And I agree with Commissioner Jung, as far as downtown Sparks is concerned, they're adding in a lot more apartments and, and, you know, you have that, there's a, there's a huge component of, I will call them millennials, but they're, but they're not just millennials that want to live in the core, that want that urban lifestyle, and this is the beginning of it. And so, I applaud it, and anything that I can do to be of assistance, I'm happy to do that. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman?
I'll just say thank you very much for coming and explaining all that to us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. You know, I wanna, I gotta say, Mr. Segal, thank you first and foremost for the amazing presentation. Madam Mayor and I have been, this has been kind of a roundabout labor of love for us for quite some time, since both of us, she took her position as mayor and I got elected to the commission. I believe that our downtown is really our doorstep to our region. It is our doorstep to the west that really welcomes everybody to our community, and I believe the City of Sparks and downtown Sparks is our doorstep to the east. And what I, I think we live in a wonderful community that's very pride-filled, and we're very unique, where some, some people move and are very transient in and out of the community. But our community, you know, everybody I talk to, my constituents move here because they love it here. They love here, they love being here, they love everything about it. And our downtown is iconic. It represents so much about our heritage and our history and who we are as people, and what we can do as a county to continue to elevate that conversation, we need to, it's our priority. It needs to be our priority, it needs to be our bailiwick, it needs to be our driving force to continue to elevate that area. So, you have my commitment, not only as a commissioner, but as an individual, that loves my community, loves my hometown, that this is going to be initiative that I will work with. And I know the City of Reno has done a phenomenal job getting this ball rolling, and I want to make sure that what we can do from the county commission's standpoint to continue to make that momentum and give it the momentum that it continues to need, we will. And from the social services side of things, the county justice, I mean... And from the social services side of things, the county justice, I mean, the judiciary part of it, we're here to support you in any way, shape, or form, moving forward. And just thank you very much. And so, in honor, really quick today, unless you have something else to add, Commissioner Hartung?
I do, and it's just, it's just a brief comment, and that is that our honorary Commissioner Trimble, you know, she's done a lot of things that move our community forward. And Madam Mayor, and you and I have, have corresponded about this. The Reno City Council would like to see Adeline in the not-too-distant future, once we get her grant dispersed, and talk about, to the Reno City Council, the things that she's done. And these are the kind of young people, Madam Mayor and Mr. Thomas and Mr. Siegel, that you need to attract into making that change happen, because right here sits the next generation.
Right. And I think, you know, and I think that speaks to the theme of today's meeting. I mean, we are, today is our, what we consider our ceremonial meeting. And I think a lot of our proclamations and different things, and especially our honorary commissioner, have been about the children. And we need to continue to elevate it. For my three-year-old that sits at home, I wanna make sure that he has a safe, healthy community. And for Commissioner Trimble here, I wanna make sure that she has a safe, viable, fun place to go work, live, eat, entertain, recreate, in our downtown area and in our town. So that's part of it. So in commensurate with our ceremonial meeting, I'd like to ask Madam Mayor, if you will, and indulge us with Commissioner Trimble and have, take a photo, please, if you will do that for us. Do we have our staff? Can we do that? Thank you. (inaudible)
Get up here. Right here with Commissioner Trimble.
Okay, Mom. You've heard it. This is the mayor's meeting.
Here we go. Ready?
Ready.
Ready. Stop it in. Ready? One, two, three. Stop it in.
What, what? Do you?
When he gets that many pictures taken, you'll figure out which is your best side. Good job. Are you ready to come over to city council?
Okay.
Yes? Will you come with her?
I promise.
Okay. All right. We would love that. We wanna hear all the great things you're doing. Yeah?
This is the future.
You are. You are. What did you think about today's experience? I just had a little bit of hesitation there. What do you think?
She learned more.
A little scared. Were you bored at all? No? Good. That's the first time.
We got a picture here. Give your phone.
Yes, I would love it. I would love it. You got it?
Yeah.
Ready?
One, two, three.
Perfect. As long as they're blessed with a good day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's just time today.
Okay. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the presentation.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Pickler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor, public, do we have any public comments signed in?
There is no public comment signed in.
All right. Seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Commissioner Burke Pickler, second by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Hartung did an aye, and then let the record show that Commissioner Jung was absent for the vote. And so the motion carries unanimously. We are on to item 10. Ms. Manager.
Okay, thank you. Item number 10 is for possible action to the county manager to utilize two or more hours of staff time to develop a program and criteria related to a proposed youth engaged in service, yes-grant program.
Move approval?
Can we just, and I will second that, can-
For reasons of discussion, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate the, the support on this. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Trimble is the, was the impetus, the reason for me to start thinking about these grants, these kinds of grants. We decided to call it, we are naming it yes-grant, youth engaged in service. We will, once staff, and we're working with, with Gabrielle Enfield, and once we have kind of the basis worked out, we will bring back some logos. We have a logo up on the screen, but we have a whole bunch of them that, that we will work on, and we'll create the framework of the grant. In, in the next fiscal year, I will seed it, and then hopefully we can get some outside money in it, and hopefully some of the other commissioners will want to put in a little bit of seed money. And we'll start engaging some of these kids. One of the things that we will require them to do is come back to us, and Adeline has agreed to come back and, and tell us about what she's done with the money and, and how she feels that she's affected her community. And I think that it's a great way to get kids involved in, in not just our community, but involved in the world, literally.
Great.
And so I'm, I'm very, very appreciative of the support. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. You know, and it looks like, Ms. Commissioner Trimble, would you like to say something at this time?
Hmm.
Or do you wanna wait till the end?
Wait.
You wanna wait? Okay. All right, so I have a motion on the, I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Pickler, second by Commissioner Hartung. Is there any public comments signed in?
No, sir.
No, no public comment at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung being absent. Thank you. All right. We are on to Ms. Manager. We are on to item 11.
Item 11 is for possible action regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislatures by Washoe County or other entities permitted by the state Nevada legislature to submit bill draft requests such as legislative issue, or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County.
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Al Rogers, Office of the County Manager. We did provide you earlier today a legislative report update that goes through week 10 of the legislature and included some data points that maybe I'll cover those first. And in interest of time, I'm happy to, unless the commission would like to go line by line or, or item by item, I can open it up and we can just address the bills that are of specific interest. So with that, as I mentioned, we are through week 10. Prior to last Friday, we were tracking almost 600 bills. That number has now dropped to a little over 400, 433. So we did see some bills not make it through the first committee, which was our first deadline last Friday. We're looking at our next deadline of next Tuesday, the 25th, of coming out of the floor. So again, our team down in Carson City and also here at home have been working diligently to keep up with those in terms of not only the position and evaluation of bills, but also noted in your notes at the end of the document, we did provide 220 fiscal notes this year. So again, great effort, and thank you to all the departments and all the agencies that provided us that information, which is typically in a very timely fashion that we have to turn those around. So with that, in your bills of interest today, I would just note that we did add some. You have a total of 33 bills that we have on today's list. Many of them are repeats, ones that we've had on the list before. There are a couple of new ones, and we didn't specifically pull those out in any notation. They are noted in each one in terms of status of which ones of those did not make it through committee. And of those, 33, 13 of those bills did not make it through. So we're looking at 20 bills moving on with the other 400, obviously, that we're continuing to watch. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to open it up and answer any questions from the dice.
Commissioner Burke Pickler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am curious about AB 153 and exactly what the details are as it relates to the counties being required to determine whether projects are projects of inter-county significance and requiring counties to pay impact these to other governments. I'd like to have a breakdown on that, so if we could bring that back at the next, it doesn't need to be today, but please bring it back to us at the next meeting, so we have a clear idea exactly what we're looking at from a cost perspective.
That one didn't pass out of the first house. So I think that was one problem with the matrix, is that we've got-
Oh, it didn't, oh, yeah.
We've got bills on here that didn't pass out. So what I would ask, Mr. Rogers, for your matrix-
Thank you.
So it doesn't confuse the commissioners, is that we remove the bills that didn't make it out of the first house.
Certainly.
And so that we only have the bills still available on our matrix going forward, that bills are their viable bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that certainly is the intent moving forward, I think, for today's conversation, and apologize for the confusion, but we did wanna point out those bills that we had been tracking to show that they did not move on past the committee. So we will certainly take care of that in the, in the next round.
Perfect. Excuse me for not reading through the entire thing.
It's, trust me, it's, I mean, it's confusing. I mean, and we've had 600 bills, and so, I mean, there's, there's so much to go through, but quite a few didn't make it out. I mean, no ones that we were looking at, obviously. We, we removed AB 39, but, you know, obviously, AB 140, that moved the boundary, didn't make it out of the house. 153 didn't make it out of the house. Floor Nation didn't make it out of the house, which was a big one that Commissioner Herman Hartung was looking at. There was quite a few that didn't make it. So what I would ask for, you know, these, especially ones that have fiscal notes and could have direct impact to the county, one, and, and the other thing I would ask, Mr. Rogers, is that when you bring the matrix back after removing those, is, let's prioritize the ones that we, that you would be, and staff are looking for actual support of, and let's, let's kinda divvy those up between support, opposition, and neutral, and then monitoring, so that we have those grouped, and so that we can kinda quickly make sure, and then the ones that we're watching, that gives the commissioners the time to go through and look at the other ones that maybe, maybe they're ones of interest. Because, I mean, for, a majority, for myself speaking alone, when I go down there, I know I'm tracking certain bills. I'm obviously not tracking all of them, I'm tracking just certain ones. And if they're not listed here, I'll, I'll ask for them to be added. But at this time, we just, if we can remove the ones that we're not currently in action, would be great. Yes.
Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything? Commissioner Herman?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair Burke Pickler, you have anything else to add?
I'm totally happy now.
Oh, you're totally happy now? Don't be. The session's still not over.
I know. I've been doing this long enough.
All right. We'll save that elated, that elated for anything. So Commissioner, Mr. Rogers, do you have anything further?
Maybe just one final comment, Mr. Chair. Thank you. In preparation for next week, obviously, this week will be a lot of floor sessions, very little committee work, so we will certainly agendize this as, as we typically do. But I would look to next week that we will update this report, but you may see very little movement in this week. I think we'll have a solid idea, more so in terms of what's, bills are still alive coming off the floor session, but in terms of major changes, this is probably one of those weeks where we won't see a lot happening. So just wanna kinda preface that with, before next week.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think you got all the direction you need. I'll just take a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung being absent. All right. We are on to our final public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments signed in?
Yes, sir, we do. We have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
All right. Button right up against that afternoon, so I'll just keep going with, "Good morning, Ms. Brandhorst."
Hi, good morning. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to tell you also that the problem is not gonna go away until we can find somebody to destroy the ones on death row. The ones on death row have no income, they have no jobs, they have no money at all. So this is going to result into stealing people's homes, stealing from department stores, stealing from shoe department stores, and also from the malls, the shopping malls will be stolen because they, they have the guns, we don't. They carry the machine guns, and they will shoot us down if they are caught shoplifting. And this is the only way that they could get their merchandise. They also do it to the grocery stores. They will steal anything out of the grocery stores, and guess what? They do come back with their machine guns or their shotguns, because they have been seen shoplifting in that grocery store. And remember, this is more than just a lawsuit, because if they die, they are murderers. And this is why we call them the ones on death row, because as long as they are still here in our territory on death row, they will still have the power to shoot us down or the power to chop our heads, because remember, we don't carry the machete knives, and we don't carry the machine guns, and we don't carry their electric chainsaws either. And so death row has escaped out of prisons also, because the prisons are a lot lighter after life in prisons, so they are still walking the streets, or maybe they got life in jail. This will also tell us that they do not belong on the streets, but they are still walking out there. They still terrorize people in their homes because they still need a place to live. Evictions have been given to them, and of course, we all know what happens with evictions. They can kill us and murder us in our own homes in order to steal our property or to steal whatever we have or own in our own homes. And I just wanted to let you know that is still going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. All right.
There is no more public comment.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, Mr. DA, Assistant DA, Watzfeld, is there any need for, it's not on the agenda for closed session today, for attorney-client, closed session? Do we need, is there need-
If there was gonna be a closed session for the BCC-
There was no-
It would have to be on the agenda, so it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
There's no closed session for the BCC.
BCC.
But there will be one for TM.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. All right, we are on to our final Commissioners and Managers' statement. Ms. Manager, do you have any statement at this time?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Herman?
Just a quick one. The library in Bird Eye still only has one day plus sometimes another half-day of being open for people to get books. And I just was hoping that we could get ahold of the right people and find out why, why we don't have any more service out there than that, and what we can do about it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Burke Pickler, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just, I wanted to thank our honorary Commissioner, Adeline Trimble, for enduring our meeting today. It, it's a, it's an interesting process, to say the least. I'm looking forward to seeing you again and hearing about all of the things that you're working on. And I'm looking forward also to accompanying you over to the City of Reno to have discussion with their city council and the mayor, and perhaps the mayor will allow you to be an honorary member of their council for the day. We'll, we'll work on that. And then we'll also work on getting you over to the City of Sparks and talking to their city council as well. So thank you so much for being here. I'm looking forward to seeing you again and hearing about all of the things that you're working on. And I'm looking forward also to accompanying you over to the city of Reno to have discussion with their city council and the mayor. And perhaps the mayor will allow you to be an honorary member of their council for the day. We'll work on that. And then we'll also work on getting you over to the city of Sparks and talking to their city council as well. So, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for bringing her, the Trimbles, and other family members. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the hard work that you have put in to allow her to do the things that she does. And this really speaks to you as parents and how you have helped her to fulfill those goals and those dreams of being a public servant. Because really, that's, that's, Mr. Trimble, that's what you are. As a schoolteacher, you are a public servant. And I believe you were a schoolteacher at one point, weren't you, Ms. Trimble? Didn't you?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought you, you know better. Very good. And I actually come from, come from a long line of schoolteachers, taught school for many years myself. And so, I understand what it takes. And you have imparted that on your daughter and it is, it's obvious how well-mannered she is and how articulate she is. You guys have done a great job. And so, thank you so much for sharing her with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Trimble, do you have any final comments for the day? How did it go? Did you have fun? Yeah? Do you like it? You see a future in this? Yeah? Oh, good.
Well, I have one, I do want to share one last comment as well. It has been an honor to have Adeline with us today. She has been a refreshing breath of air to this commission. And it goes and speaks to the reason why all five of us sit at this dais every day is for young ladies and young men like herself that are the reason. You're our future. And we thank you for, I think, a big thanks goes to you for all the hard work that you've been doing. And please tell all your friends at school and all your friends and your teachers what a great job you did today. And I'm sure your parents will continue to share that. But along, I see a bright future ahead for you. And I'm excited that we got to be part of that bright future. And just remember the little guys back when, when you become that big, successful president one of these days, that we were here at the beginning for you. So, congratulations to you and look forward to what you do in the future. So, have a wonderful day. With that being said, I have nothing further.